So that said, I will call to order the committee of the whole and ask Councilor Tim Flaherty to call to order the Committee on Finance and Property.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call to order Finance and Property and fair all of you at home. Councilor Randolph, Vice President, is on that committee along with Council President Paul Guanci.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Do you have anything to say or ask before we go to our first department head?
Yes, one, a couple of things I want to mention, and the council knows this. This is all different than we usually do it. We usually go page by page with every department head going over each line item. I've asked the council to make it a little streamlined this year for the viewers and for ourselves to make it easier and go department by department and have questions prepared beforehand. I do want, I would like to have Jerry Perry come before us and explain to us. Every year, we have our budget analysts come before us on this particular time, which is probably the most important part of his job, to review the budget. He sits down with Brian Ailes and with the mayor beforehand to discuss some light item and kind of does some of the little bit of dirty work beforehand to try to get an understanding. He has a lot of experience doing this in the past. It's very helpful. So sometimes a bunch of does come before us. A lot of things that the mayor or the administration was going to put forth or had some questions on because has been ironed out. That doesn't say that it's not a perfect document. There are going to be questions beforehand. We'll have questions of Jerry going forward on this, why he thought this was a good idea. And then individually, we'll be asking each department head to explain what they're doing. Obviously, this is going to be a challenging year, and there should be a lot of good questions coming forward. But if Jerry could come and kind of wrap it up and have a good idea of his review when he did this for us this year. Jerry, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Good evening. Good to see you all as always. As you know, the members of the council, I did copy members of the school department as well, and the mayor and Bryant. Last Friday, June 5th, I forwarded to my annual budget memorandum to you with an executive summary and some breakdowns of certain categories to assist in your deliberations. I hope you've received it and had an opportunity to review it. Several of you have called me and asked me several questions, and I appreciate the feedback, and hopefully I was assistance to you. Let me for about five or so minutes, Mr. Chairman, go through some of the highlights of the budget to hopefully better understand things. Simply put, I think we all know, as the chairman indicated, this is an unusual year, a very difficult year with the pandemic. The challenges that all cities and towns, as well as the state and the federal government are facing is not so much on the expenditure side, but on the revenue side. Trying to calculate what those revenues are and how we can fit it into the budget. And I think we've done, I think the city has done a pretty good job, and hopefully you'll agree with that when we go through that. There is risk. You have to understand that there is absolute risk with this. We're making certain, or the city, I should say, is making certain assumptions, of which I concur with in terms of what we anticipate, what these revenues are, and I'll briefly talk about some of them in a moment here. But that risk is on the table, and the council, in my view, and my recommendation to you, is going to be cognizant of that. We may need to be flexible to make amendments or modifications to the budget as we move forward, depending on circumstances as they change. So it's something you need to be aware of. Nobody knows what the future is. That's what the risk is. Traditionally, when we build these budgets, we have all kinds of historical data, and you can pretty much determine within a reasonable amount how much revenue you're going to receive. But there is a little bit of a wild card here. But I believe that the plan as put forward on the revenue side works. One of the concerns that several of you have raised to me is a Plan B. So what happens if we're wrong on the revenues, and do we have to come back? There is a Plan B. I've discussed this a great length with the finance director and several of you, that Plan B simply is twofold. It's a revenue and an expenditure side. We still have stabilization fund that we can tap into if we really get into trouble, if you want to not cut further services. Also, on the expenditure side, we discussed there are opportunities to cut the budget if necessary. That would be in the areas possibly of roads and sidewalks, if that's of interest to you. We have some funding that won't be spent the second half of the year, probably in the vicinity of half a million dollars that we could consider. Or there's a few capital expenditures in the DPW department that we could consider. So I'm comfortable we have a Plan B if things get really tight for us, and I look forward to working with you if we have to. With regards to revenues, the budget asks for $136,526,495. The new net revenue for the city, which you've seen in the reports, and I know the administration's brief you, is $1,568,739, or a 1.16% increase in new net revenues from the prior fiscal year. Within those revenues, the two and a half increase is properly calculated. I do thank Councilor Feldman. We went over that again today to make sure we were right on that. So I am comfortable with that. We have new growth of 1.2 million, which is appropriate from the assessors. I'm comfortable with that. One of the things that the administration, which I know many are aware of, has decided not to fund the overlay account this year. In the current fiscal year of FY '20, we used $675,000. We will not be funding that at all this year, and I believe we're considering that for next year as well. That gives us some relief on the budget, which helps us along the way. I am of the opinion there are sufficient funds in the overlay to carry us on abatements, not only this year, but I believe next year, and I'm comfortable with that assessment. Probably one of the largest discussions I've had with the administration, specifically the finance director, Mr. Ailes, is state aid. That is, to me, the biggest wild card. We started, I can assure you, and I'm sure he'll confirm this, I'd say over the last six to eight weeks, we've had at least eight to 10 conversations lasting as long as two hours at a time, trying to figure this out and trying to figure out what the economists are looking at and things of that nature. I, quite frankly, came in a little differently than he did at the first phase, and I thought it was 15% of the existing years, or the governor's budget from January. He started at 15% of FY '20, and he's gone up to 17.5% on the FY '20 actuals. I agree with that 2.5%. And one of the things that made me change the most in my assessment of this was the Mass Taxpayers Foundation, which I think I wrote to you in the executive summary to all of you. The mass taxpayers in April, when I wrote a memo to you about what all the economists said, they went from $5 billion, literally up to $6 billion of lost revenue at the state aid, at the state level. So I am a big believer. I've done a lot of work with the Mass Taxpayers Foundation. I have a lot of confidence in them. So for the administration to move from originally internal conversations of 15% to 17.5%, I think is the right approach. I agree with their assessment, and I hope you'll agree with them as well. And one of the biggest things we're doing on the revenue side is the use of stabilization. The last five or six years, the city of Beverly's done a great job, in my view, of building up its reserves. We've even been criticized a little bit for some of those reserves, thinking we overdid it. But now I think all that hard work is going to come to fruition here. We have over $14 million in stabilization, of which the administration is suggesting we use $1,598,808 to balance the budget here. I just had a conversation with one of the councils about a half hour ago about this. If you were to equate that to employees, that would amount to 20 to 25 employees that we are hopefully not going to have to lay off here, which would include unemployment-related matters. And I think that using the stabilization at that dollar amount is an appropriate amount there. I did have conversation with our outside auditors about use this and my concerns about the bond rating, and I've been assured that using stabilization funds over the next several years will not impact the bond rating. And I found that very comforting, and I hope that you will be comfortable with that. So with regard to revenues, I do recommend all their assumptions that they forwarded to you in their budget booklets and some of the things I discussed. On the expenditure side, they are asking for you to appropriate the same amount of money, $136,626,495. If the revenue assumptions are accurate and the expenditures that the administration asks for you, we will have a balanced budget, and we can set the tax rate in December there. But again, we have to be flexible depending upon changing circumstances. Of the 1.5 million, a little over 1.5 million of new money, 89% is going to the school department, and 11% is going to all other expenditures within the budget. And that's pretty consistent with what the administration has done in prior years in their budget submissions to you, and fairly consistent with what the council has approved in certainly my tenure, this being my fourth budget with you. On the municipal side, there is some cuts, you'll see, which I'm sure the department hits. There is reductions in certain areas that include the city council, the reserves for appropriation, the city solicitor, the human resources, planning, harbor master, public services, and community services. My analysis, even though it's tight belting, if you will, on the municipal side, it's my understanding they can still provide the services. They're just trying to balance a budget and work accordingly. You will just see that on the reserve for appropriations is quite a large cut, from 1.6 million down to $639,000. That is due to the fact that in the current year, FY '20, we use that as a holding fund to transfer for collective bargaining. And a lot of that money is now you're seeing in the various departments. That's why some of the departments, especially police and fire, seeing increases. It's to deal with the collective bargaining, but it's really shifting the money that we had in the current fiscal year into FY '21 in those departments. That's why you see such a cut. It's my understanding and discussions with the administration that there are no new employees on the municipal side with regard to this budget. However, the administration does plan, if vacancies occur, to backfill these positions. They're not going to attrit positions as we know it now, and they, again, try to maintain services as is. With regard to the school budget, the school budget is $62,417,942. It's one of the lowest increases I've seen. It is the lowest increase since I've been with you, this being, again, my fourth budget. I do commend the school department for working with the municipal side, for understanding the circumstances we're facing with. I do want to personally thank the superintendent and the business manager. They gave me almost two hours the other day to go over their entire budget and to discuss these matters with them. I think they're doing a really good job, given the circumstances. And I know that they're working hard to see if they can return funds back to the balance sheet, which I think is a wise decision, helping the city. So I definitely applaud them for their efforts and thank them for what they're doing. The school budget does call for 5.5 new school teachers, as well as one new power professional. That is to address increasing enrollments. They have over $3.8 million in revolving funds, which is normal. Most of that has to do with circuit breaker accounts to deal with special ed, but that augments the $62 million there. It does eliminate fully and totally the kindergarten fee, which you've all heard about there. And finally, they do have funds in there for contingency funds associated with collective bargaining for next year, as I believe the agreements are done on June 30th. With regard to the enterprise funds, all the accounts appear to be in balance. The water rate for this year will be $3.02 per 100 cubic feet. In order to that at the same level, the administration is asking for $881,000 to be transferred from retained earnings. There are sufficient funds for that. As for those of you who've been doing this for several years, this is traditionally what the administration does in terms of transferring retained earnings. So that's not new at all. In terms of the sewer rate, that's going to be $6.16 per 100 cubic feet. The total water sewer rates will be $9.20, which is going to be the same as the current fiscal year. So there was no raises in that. In order to achieve that, we need to transfer $305,639 from the budget. In my document, which I turned around in 24 hours, is a couple of typos. It doesn't change any of this. I just want to bring it to attention. I thank Councilor Feldman for bringing my attention on both page five and on the page nine, and I'll correct that and send you a minute in motion. But it makes no difference. It was just a typo. The only other thing I bring to your attention with regard to sewer, you may want to talk to the Commissioner Collins about this. There is about a 4% increase in the SESD allocation, our request for budget this year. It's about, last year was only 1.5%. So it's a little bit more than I've seen in other years, and I'm sure Commissioner Collins can explain that to you when he comes in and speaks to you with regard to his budget. The remaining enterprise funds have minimal changes. There's some slight decreases in recreation, and because they just can't provide the services, given the COVID issues, there is also some slight decreases in the golf and tennis due to the fact that the clubhouse is not open, and they can't have as many golfers out there, given the circumstances. So they address that, and we'll be dealing with some of those transfers next Monday night, Mr. President, when we have public hearings on transfers from retained earnings. So bottom line to it and some of my conclusions, and I'm almost done here, the budget does maintain existing services and avoids layoffs. It addresses increased student enrollment on the school side. We have a Plan B. We can use revenues or cut budgets if necessary moving forward, which I'm confident we can use, whether it's stabilization or reduction of various budget matters. Again, the council needs to be flexible. One of my biggest concerns in building this budget, and I think Mr. Ailes would agree with this, is when you build a budget in any year, you're always looking into the future. And I know both Chairman and Councilor Housman and Councilor Ames did a lot of work on financial forecasting, and we're always talking about that kind of stuff. Next year's budget is going to be much more challenging, in my view. We're going to have, as I think as the mayor may have articulated to you in your various meetings, we're going to see an increase in debt of $2.2 million. One of the things not really discussed, which I am going to raise tonight a little bit, is my concerns about pensions. Even though the stock, the stock market dramatically dropped in March, as we know, it is coming back, surprisingly. But that could have an impact on increasing pension requests in next years because of the investments. We just have to wait on that. But I bring that to your attention. We will also have challenges in collective bargaining, and we never know what the additional revenue shortfalls may or may not be. In closing, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the council, it is my recommendation to you to approve this budget as is. Certainly, I defer to you all. I'll make no recommendations. If you think budgets should be cut, that's your prerogative. I feel it can be afforded, given as it is here. And I'll close with what I've said to some of you in my private one-on-one conversations. Given the hard work done by the administration and past and present members of the city council, we've done a great job of putting money aside in stabilization and preparing for crazy circumstances like this pandemic, which we never anticipated here. We are ready for it. I can tell you that the city of Beverly is the envy of many cities and towns in the Commonwealth, because we have the financial wherewithal to handle this kind of unusual circumstances with the revenues that we're losing in this year. And again, it has my recommendation, Mr. Chairman and Mr. President, for the city council to approve this budget. That concludes my presentation. Members of the council, Mr. Chairman, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you or your colleagues may have.
Any questions for Mr. Perry before we move on to hear from Mayor Cahill? Maybe later. You'll be here the whole evening, correct?
Yes, I will, Mr. President. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Great. First up is the honorable Mayor Michael P. Cahill. Your Honor.
Trying to turn my camera on. Do you see me?
Yeah, there you are.
Okay. So now, by that, do you mean we're going right into the executive office budget?
Right into the executive budget, if you want to talk about it, some highlights, and then we'll open up the floor to some questions from some counselors.
It's a pretty basic budget. I mean, what you'll see is there are a handful of us who work in the department. There are, there is one line that has existed for the last several years. You folks have been really helpful and supportive. There are about 36 or 37 employees who are non-union in the city, on the city work force, other than me. And the only way to address them year to year with any type of COLA or market correction or adjustment for salary is through that line. It's a line that we funded at $100,000 this past year. We are, we're not requesting any money in that line this year. I know we talked about that already. Not a time when we can be offering raises. So that line is struck for this year. I hope that, you know, some year in the very near future, we're able to begin to fund that again. But for now, it's, it's not there. During the course of the year, as you know, that whatever money is in that account starts in the executive budget, and when those COLAs are distributed out to that 36 or 37 positions, they end up in other departments' lines by the end of the year. But I mentioned that, and I think I'll just, I think I'll just leave it at that. I mean, it's, you know, you see the pages. There aren't a lot of pages when it comes to the, to the few larger lines. And well, you know, I'll mention, which Mr. Perry mentioned, and I did the other night in my budget address, the city appropriation to roads and sidewalks lands in the executive budget. And as you know, we funded that at 1.75 million last year, which was our high watermark. We've talked for the last several years about doing as much work on roads and sidewalks as we possibly can each year, knowing that the need is great and recognizing that that's a line that we'll need to pull back on when the economy gets tighter. Nobody expected in such a quick amount of time to, you know, for the economy to be what it is right now. But you can see that that line is recommended at 1.4, so that's a $350,000 decrease. I think any other, any other points probably either can be, if there are any questions I can answer, or Mr. Ailes, I'm going to ask him to answer any questions about the larger reserve lines, which I know Mr. Perry just touched on as well. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Honor. And Councilor Rotundo has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, just a couple of questions in regards to line items. I see there's a shift in salaries between the chief of staff and constituency service. I know one went up, one went down. Is there any particular reason? Why is that something that, you know, you just, I guess I just kind of caught my attention.
So I had trouble hearing you at one point. Was the question that one went up and one went down?
Correct. The shift in salaries went from one way to another. So was it, you know, just...
Right. Understood. So, so it, and I know you remember this mid-year, we lost Mr. Hartunian, who had been chief of staff for, what, just almost six years. And for anybody who didn't know that, who's watching, he, he's alive and well, and he's the town administrator in Topsfield. Great opportunity. They came knocking, and they recruited him away. Something that I'm, I'm just grateful we had him for six years. What we, when we posted that job, there are a couple of things that I was striving for. The job, the job evolved, because it didn't, it really didn't exist before, before he took it. We created the position in the winter of 2014, when I took office. And he was working that as a really, on average, 50 to 60-hour a week position, with a lot of spikes over 60 hours during busy times. And it's not a, that's not a, it's not something I really was comfortable asking of anybody as I reposted. Didn't realize when I hired him that it was going to be that kind of all-inclusive. So what we did was, we took a, just a piece of that and pushed it over to the constituent services director position. Mrs. Bellotti, as you remember, was the constituent services director. When she was there, there was a lot that she took on in project management that, that made it so that Mr. Hartunian hung on to some of the constituent work, probably more than we would like out of that position, kind of on a regular basis. So between some of the project management that Mrs. Bellotti was doing and the fact that she had been along the way taking on the role of sustainability director for the, for the city as well, we decided as we recast the position and re-advertising, to pull some of the constituent services, like a greater percentage of it, back over to the constituent services director position. So what we did is we advertised the position. We advertised it a little bit less for chief of staff. We had to advertise the constituent services a bit up. They still have a difference between them. And then when we hired, we ended up, if you remember this, we promoted Mrs. Bellotti. And then when we then went to fill the constituent services position, we ended up hiring Mrs. Ruel Kersker. And so when you look at that, the position as constituted, had Mr. Hartunian not left, we would have been pushing that position up to a higher number than it was. But instead, we were able to bring it back down some. Mrs. Bellotti, two years with the city, so we were able to hire her at $87,000. Where with Mr. Hartunian, had he stayed, at that point, it would have been likely over $100,000. So we were able to hire there, and it seemed appropriate for the, for the job as reconstituted and for the term of service. And then when we, when we advertised for the other position and found that Mrs. Ruel Kersker was the person for that, she brought with her over 15, maybe close to 16 years' experience working in the rec. department. So when you added those together, the, the salary levels where we pegged them seemed to work in all cases in terms of job responsibilities, level of longevity of service or term of service with the city. And I would, I would have to say to you that, working with the two of them together for the last six months, they have really, I don't want to say seamlessly, because that's probably impossible, but really easily formed an incredibly, incredibly strong and a very well-oiled team in that sense. So a lot of great things going on with them and all the work that they're helping all of you and me and the community with. I hope that's helpful in looking at that. And if you look at the overall, you know, we tried to make it a marketed, well, I'll say also, Mrs. Bellotti's position, or should I say the constituent services director position, when we first hired, really was pegged too low. And we were trying to make a market correction over a couple of years with that position. So where it sat at 64.5 was really still a bit too low for the, for the level of, level of professionalism, education, and the responsibilities of the job. So that's another reason why we tried to bring that position up as well for whoever we would have hired. And then we, you didn't ask about this, but I'll mention it. Mrs. Barrett is our grants director. She's incredible, and probably, well, I'll say this, everybody that we have working here is worth every penny they get, and then quite a bit more. And, you know, also, we recognize that that's where we are. That's how we adjusted during the FY '20 timeframe. It was all adjusted pre-COVID. But now we see that, you know, that's where people are going to sit for the time being, in terms of the remuneration they get. I hope that's helpful as an explanation.
It is, Mr. President. I have one more question, then I'll leave it to another councilor, Mr. Mayor. Just in regards to the summer program coming up.
Yes.
Do you suspect that it may actually add to your budget, just because if we go to a regular, that's the old summer program was, you need to add staff. I know you have worked collaboratively with the Y and with the school. Do you foresee that budget possibly going up for you? Or, I mean, right now, it's just, I'm assuming you're going with what you had last year, but we know that the ratio from staff to kids may go up, or go down, rather, I should say, because of the COVID. Do you suspect that might affect it at all?
That's a good question. I heard it. I had to stretch a bit, because part of your, part of your question, we heard you really well and a bit we didn't, but your question was about the summer learning program, which is funded in part out of an appropriation in the executive department. And that's something that the council and I committed to several years ago now, as a way of acknowledging that most of the budget comes from fundraised money from various grant opportunities and corporate donations. Then there's a significant in kind from the YMCA. Whether we fear that, that the costs are going to be greater. I'll say this. We served 180 kids last summer. We are at about 120-ish right now, and we really, we paused. We didn't send out any more invitations, because we've been concerned that the need for space and the need for the staffing ratios might be problematic. Now, we have a meeting later this week. We need to make a decision in the next week to 10 days as to whether we're going to run the program, whether we'll run it the way we did last year, in person at the school, in person in the afternoon with the Y, whether we run it remotely, only for school and don't have the afternoon. We're looking at all those options. The, the fact that we may run fewer class sections should help us with the budget. We've gotten some of our grants that we've got in past years. We've been told by at least one grantor that there's not money available for us this summer. We, we know how significant the need is. There are a lot of kids who've done well with this. There are a lot of, a lot of families in position to do well, as well as possible with the remote learning. And there are some of our kids who we know it's problematic that they haven't been in school, and the importance of this program to them. So I would say, whether it be extra PPE costs, ratios of teacher to student, we were prepared for it. And if the budget per pupil is a bit higher, I believe we can handle it, and we wouldn't be looking for any more money out of this line. But I think we can handle it within this line. And if the norman is 120, or 130, or 140 instead of 180, I think we can make it work. But we, you know, we haven't made a firm decision on whether we're moving ahead. That's a decision that will be made by several people, and we'll be sitting down to talk that through later this week, now that we have, what we have currently from the state are draft guidelines on summer school, with a promise of final guidelines by sometime later this month. So we're, you know, we're working with the draft guidelines right now, and hopefully that'll be, it'll be a good, a good sign of what the final, final guidelines will look like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ames.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank both Mr. Ailes and Mr. Perry for the digital formats of the budget they supplied to me, which were extremely helpful. And I'd like to say right off the bat, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, because I think this budget is a model because I think this budget is a moderate budget. It does not certainly cut everything to the bone. And I think that in that way, it seriously invests in the city and it serves people, it does serve the residents pretty darn well, you know, considering the situation. My question is just to get some background and understanding of your unforeseen expenses line? Because it has gone down. And I was hoping you could briefly explain to me historically where that money is spent. And given the challenges that you see this year, explain where you think these monies could be spent. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to turn to Mr. Ailes, and I warned him I would do this because he has a better memory than me of some of the things we have tapped this line for in recent years. And I know there are a couple of things that were, that we knew would be happening last year that don't happen every year. So, I knew, you know, he knew that we needed that line to be higher last year. As you'll see, it was a higher number last year than we're asking for this year. Mr. Ailes, can you handle that question?
Happy to, Mayor. Counselor Ames, yes. Historically, this line item is almost always requested to be funded at $1.25 million. We have used that in past fiscal years for anything from excessive snowstorms or unforeseen grant matches that might leverage a small amount of city dollars to obtain a larger value of grant for some initiative. Those are just some examples. But it truly represents the kind of unforeseen nature of building a budget, you know, 13 months in advance before the end of the fiscal year. So, there is a lot of value with that. And anytime we, as an administration, request that that money be used, we have to come before the Council and actually transfer those funds out of this appropriated line and into whatever it is the purpose we're requesting. For FY '20, there was a small bump of $65,000, and that was really to address some of the ramp-up costs associated with the effort to consolidate dispatch. And we've been undertaking that. Mr. Hartunian leaving, who was managing the project, kind of pressed pause a little bit on the initiative. And now with the whole COVID thing, we need to tap the brakes a little so there isn't anything in the budget this year associated with that. But that's why the bump was for FY '20. It was to ultimately bring it out for some salary needs if needed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you anticipate where, do you have any idea where some of these funds might be spent in the coming year?
Well, that's a good question. I think we may have less of, less of a sense of that this year than in a typical year. Certainly, you know, if we, if we find a need as the year goes on, if the revenues come in, you know, less, less healthily than we hope, if there's that, you know, second surge, if, you know, whatever might cause it, you know, we may need to try to turn that back. But, you know, as far as where we might anticipate, you know, we're still hoping that, that when the free cash certification comes late in the year, we're going to be able to meet those three priorities that remain, which is the additional funding over to the police station. Is that, there's a piece of that remaining. The fire truck that we hope to order, the HVAC replacement at the main branch library. You know, hopefully, free cash would be available for that. One thing I might just say aloud, and this, this is just because we're, you know, we're trying to read the tea leaves a bit, right? If that, you know, if we look at the HVAC system cost out and it comes in higher than we're hoping, maybe that's a place to go for $100, $150,000 out of that unforeseen. You know, Mr. Ailes, I don't know what you think of that. I mean, obviously, we try to do those projects entirely with free cash, those smaller capital projects that aren't really large enough to bond for. But, you know, you look to take care of them when you can. That's one that might occur to me. Mr. Ailes probably has thoughts of some smaller ones. You know, as he mentioned, you know, in good times and bads, there are grants available. And if one, you know, if one shows itself that a department doesn't have a line that can go towards the match, that's a good example. You know, we, we're undertaking the Climate Action Plan, and that requires a match. And we're, you know, we're looking, we'll talk about that when planning's there. We're looking to the planning budget for that. But that may leave them too tight on a needed, you know, some needed help with an ordinance effort, for example, that they might need some outside help for. You know, so maybe something, something as, as kind of granular as that might lend itself to a piece of that line as an example.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else from Mayor Cale? All right, let's move right on to, Brian Ailes is ready to go, our Finance Director. He'll talk about the Assessors Office, IT. And are you going to talk about the special revenue accounts also tonight, Mr. Ailes?
I believe the special revenue accounts, meaning the other enterprise funds?
Yes.
I may have an older version of the agenda, but I saw that on our third evening, I thought.
Okay. So, let's just talk about your department tonight.
Sure. Well, I'll just say in general that the Finance Department consists of multiple departments, the Assessors Department, the Treasury and Collectors Department, the Accounting Department. We oversee the Procurement Department, however, they're contained in a separate section of the budget here, as well as IT. Some of the things you'll notice in these budgets is that a couple of the departments actually had increases year-over-year. And the two primary reasons for those increases relate to, first, within the Accounting Department, we, within that department, house all of the city's insurance premiums. It's a very large item. It's $700,000 to $800,000. And we budget a typical 3% increase in that year-over-year. That is the cause for the increase in the Accounting Department. In the IT Department, you'll notice a little bit of an increase as well. That has to do with an initiative we undertook, oh, roughly, probably nine months ago now, pre-COVID, to consolidate our software platforms that all the departments use for permitting, for project management. And that system itself, Eric Barber of the Engineering Department has been leading the consolidation effort, the data merging effort, and integrating that through all of our operations to have a much more state-of-the-art, seamless type of an experience for the users. That carries with it some costs, not only to migrate the data and build this system and customize it, but also on an ongoing basis in terms of licensing agreements. So, you do see an increase associated with that. Other than that, there is very minimal movement throughout the departments. What we attempted to do through all of the Finance Departments was to absorb as much of the collectively bargained cost increases within the existing budgets as we could so that there wasn't any adjustment to the salary line, i.e. FTEs. And you'll see that theme consistent throughout all departments. I'll stop there and answer any questions someone, anyone may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Our Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ailes, I have a few questions. Have you guys considered, I know we hear on budget meetings and when we get together, but have you guys considered as an administration to say, raise the tax limit by 1%? What would our budget look like in regards to taxes? People's, you know, personally are hurting right now as we all know, you know, the economy's tough. Most of those turned to layoffs. The other question is, in the event that, say, if money does come in more than we expected, how would that be translated to? So, I know you're anticipating a 17.5% cut in state aid. You know, what if there's a 20% or 25% cut in state aid, so contingency? Or vice versa, is what if there's less, or we, revenue for our, you know, the registry of motor vehicles comes in higher than expected? So, I guess it could work either way on those.
Okay. So, let me, if I could, address the second question first. So, in terms of our revenue projections, we know there's going to be variances. We're going to have some that the variances are positive, some that the variances are negative. Some of the revenue streams that we rely on, particularly motor vehicle excise, we don't know that figure until the spring in nine months from now. So, we basically are setting a target, but we won't know if we hit that until nine months from now. So, even if there are some positive revenue variances that materialize prior to that, it still may carry some risk if we begin to spend up to the level, not knowing where the motor vehicles ultimately will fall. Because motor vehicle comprises about 6% to 7%, I think it's about 6% of our budget. And so, that's a big, along with state aid, that's a big vulnerability that the city has in terms of any revenue fluctuation. If the revenues were to come in significantly out of the gate in state aid shorter than we're projecting in terms of, you know, we're holding a 17.5% cut. If, for instance, they come in at 20% reduction, we have, as Mr. Perry stated, and that the mayor and I have been speaking at length about, feels like daily, what if, right? What's the what-if scenario? And it really depends on how significant the variance is. And we feel that even another 2.5% variance on state aid, that equates to about $400,000. And $400,000 can be absorbed through a number of ways. You can reduce additional expenditures, mainly the types of expenditures that we wait till the latter part of the year to spend typically. That's roads and sidewalks. A big portion of that doesn't happen till the spring. With that's a lot of our equipment purchases in the DPW Departments and other Departments. Those tend to happen in the springtime, later in the fiscal year. We talked about the Reserve for Unforeseen. Those are resources that are also available. And one we haven't talked about is, we are making projections around new growth. And the new growth figures relate to the growth that took place from July 1 of 2019 through June 30 of 2020. And so, for three quarters of that period before the COVID pandemic hit, we were humming along, and it was a typical economy. We've put in the budget 1.2 million in new growth. If we were to exceed that, that would be a positive revenue variance that we could use to offset potentially a negative revenue variance that we might see elsewhere. So, there's a number of different possibilities at play here, Counselor. It's a great question. Most likely, if there were variances, it would be a combination of many of those things we just talked about. In addition to stabilization reserves. I mean, we have reserves, they're there for a reason. We just need to be very mindful of making sure that they last the length of this, this problem, this financial pressure. We can't dip too deep too soon. So, that gives you a sense if revenues come in under, if revenues come in over, it's a great question. If they, if they tend to start coming in over after setting the tax rate, there's really nothing we can do about it. It's positive revenue. It goes to free cash and ultimately can be re-appropriated by the Council at a later date. We don't lose it. You get it. You just get to spend it later. If, if the positive revenues really begin materializing prior to setting the tax rate, there always is the option for adjusting expenditure levels or decreasing the reliance on the stabilization fund. And I'll just throw that out there as potential options. But depending upon the level of the variance, I think anything could really happen at that point. We just, those, that's the totality of the possibilities that we could be discussing. As for your first question, Counselor, related to the tax rate, and I assume we're going to talk a little bit more about this when we get into the revenue section of the budget. But the tax rate and the levy, the 2.5%, Prop 2.5%, I believe, was put in place roughly 30 years ago. The city of Beverly has always gone to its limit, 2.5%. We have never passed an override in the history of Proposition 2.5. A lot of smaller towns or cities that experience different types of pressures than Beverly do, on occasion, will pass an override to increase taxes beyond the statutory limit of 2.5%. This budget is built on a 2.5% increase. That value is $2.7 million. So, if you took that $2.7 million out of the equation, we would either have to cut an additional $2.7 million. Now, keep in mind that when you look at the budget, a small portion of that is really what we're talking about in terms of discretionary spending. A large portion of it is non-discretionary spending, and we must meet those obligations like debt, like pension, like healthcare. So, you're forced to take a much larger reduction to a much smaller part of the budget if you're not able to rely on the 2.7 in additional monies. Now, if we were to come off of the 2.5% increase, say, you know, 2.25%, what that equates to is about $270,000 less in the budget. And so, we would either need to make additional reductions for 270 or find additional revenues of 270 through a reserve or some form like that. What that 270 or 25% means to a taxpayer is roughly, and these are working off of last year's figures and last year's average tax bills. But the tax bill, rather than going up $175, would go up $156. So, there's still an increase. It's just significantly, I shouldn't say significantly. It's just a little bit less for the average taxpayer. Now, that's just very rough back-of-the-envelope math. But it equates to $1.45 per month less in taxes that your, every taxpayer would feel. So, I think the real question is the benefit to the taxpayer versus the actual impact and pain that it may cause budgetarily or for service levels or for staffing levels. And again, that's a policy decision. I'm glad we're all having the discussion. It's an important discussion to have. So, I'll, I'll stop there. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Counselor Rotundo, you're good?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to Counselor Houseman, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ailes already largely preempted my question by talking about the additional increased expenditure on the computer, hardware, and software side. I thought it was interesting to note that he, Mr. Ailes, you refer to it as largely software because I know that in a time when the city is operating more on a virtual basis than it ever has before, cybersecurity for the city is particularly important. And I know that the IT Department has made some investments on hardware side. So, I assumed that that's actually what this increase was for. Is most of it software, not hardware?
Almost all of it, actually, about $200,000 in additional costs has been absorbed within the IT budget, creating a slight bump year-over-year. It creates an $80,000 increase in the budget. But we absorbed $200,000 in increased costs related specifically to this enterprise software solution. That is, in fact, a cloud-based data system that will house some information. But more importantly, it's a data, it's a database tool that all departments will benefit from across the city in terms of project management, in terms of processing, interacting with our multiple systems that we have in every department.
Are these mostly software through Tyler Industries or, you know, Tyler in one department or another? Or is it a mixture of companies?
No, this is, this is an overarching kind of database that will sit over everything. And it's called Central Square. And it basically interacts with all the other databases that we have. And where there's duplicative services or duplicative functions, we can in some cases remove some of our software platforms. Like View Permit, for instance, will go away when Central Square comes up and takes over that function for the Building Department. And there's other smaller examples in other departments as well.
Okay. Another question, a couple of line items below it. There's a decrease in cellular phones, phone system licensing fees and so forth. Is that related to the increase in software expenditures you just described? Or is that a separate, sort of a separate set of costs that are changing?
Yes. So, in 2020, the $200,000, $202,000 original appropriation included an entire revamp of the telephone system. Some of those resources went to telephones and upgrading some departments outside of City Hall. But another portion of that went to start the migration process with Central Square and was transferred up to the line, two lines above it. And then for next year, the reason why it's such a large decrease is because we won't have that replacement cost of the telephone system. That is actually a component of our communication upgrades as a part of the CARES Act that we're submitting or that we submitted last week.
As part of the CARES Act, really? Okay. Okay. All right, those were, those are my questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Hausman. Counselor Feldman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, this is, I know that we're going to get more into it probably on the revenue side, but kind of along the same lines as Counselor Rotundo. I know that I had asked about previously too in our smaller group meeting about the possibly not going to the max with the tax levy this year and what that would look like if we ask for something a little bit less on our constituents. Because that, quite frankly, is, I would be not really representing the people who work by wealth if I didn't ask about this because that's the number one question about raising the taxes every year to the max. And, you know, this budget looks incredibly strong, and I was really pleased to see that. And I'm wondering, I, I, I know, I hear what you're saying on the negligible impact on people's individual tax bills, but, you know, part of it is wanting to be able to say that we will not use the max, to point the, use Prop. 2.5 to the, to the top of the limit every time we are available, we're able to. And so I was, I was looking at some of the numbers, and my questions are specifically about, I kind of use 2% instead of 2.5 is my kind of looking at the math. And that would be mean that there is a loss in revenue of just over a half a million. And that would be, my question would be, is there a possibility in looking at using stabilization funds for something like that to make up that half a million? And if so, I, because I understand that usually we want to use recurring revenues for recurring expenses. And, but since this is a year we're already drawing from the stabilization fund in these times, and it would be a good year to possibly give the citizens of Beverly a bit of a tax break, wouldn't we be able to use stabilization funds for something, for funding something like this revenue loss? And if so, would that, would that half a million more affect our bond rating? Because it looks like we're just at 1.2 million now in the ask, so that would really only put us right, right about at 1.6. And I'm wondering if that level of ask from the stabilization fund would put enough of a dent in the, the fund itself to affect us on term?
If I could, a couple thoughts, Counselor. If we were to raise 500,000 less in property taxes, but not, and believe that the level of expenses, expenditures that we plan to make is the right level, which we believe that, that, and, and we tapped reserves for an additional half a million. A couple of things we all need to keep in mind. If we believed that about the FY21 budget and that 500,000 of expenses, then we would believe it likely next year and the year after. Meaning if, if it's, if those are expenditures that we believe are necessary to deliver the high-quality services that people count on and need through all parts of the budget, then that 500,000 from the, from the stabilization really needs to be included each year going forward. So, and, and you've seen, and I'm going to ask Mr. Ailes at some point during these hearings to make sure he shows the, the, the history of the last two recessions that show that local aid from the state, whatever level it was at at the beginning of those recessions, six years later, it hadn't recovered back to that six-year earlier level, which means whatever cuts we absorb in revenues are going to last. Whatever draws we need to make on stabilization are going to need to be made again and again and again. So that additional half million in tax revenues foregone would mean two to two and a half million more stabilization draw over the next four to five years, just for that piece. Now, if we increase the, the stabilization draw to 1.6 or 1.7 million, then just multiply that by four or five. That said, we also know that next year's budget is going to be more challenging because of the already committed to debt for the police, for the, for the third round of borrowing for the middle school and all the borrowing for the police station. As well as, as Mr. Ailes has pointed out a couple of times, the increased costs again on pension, which Mr. Perry said earlier, he's worried that if the pension fund doesn't perform all enough over the next year, that we may be told that our increase for next year has to be at a higher level than we're already thinking. And then there's the, the reality, we know that the cost to, to pick up trash and recycling is almost certainly going to be higher when we, when we agree on a new contract, either with JRM or somebody else in a year's time. So those are a number, a number of expense lines that we know are going to be significantly greater in FY22. So whatever we don't take in for tax revenues this year, we're either cutting another half a million out of the budget now, or we're saying that that half million is important in terms of the services it delivers, and we dip into stabilization. We do it now, we're going to do it repeatedly. And then, again, the amount that we're going to need to look for help on through, through our reserves next year, almost certainly to be greater as a result of those additional revenues. And that's naughty, and there's one more piece to this, is we know that some of the ways in which we replenish free cash are not going to be available to us in the way they have. So when we do spend our free cash level down by some amount for those critical expenditures that we talked about, the police station funding, the fire truck, the HVAC system at the, at the, at the library, and we're trying not to, you know, these, all of these are significant, you know, important things in and of their, in and on their own. So you take all of that together, we're going to have fewer reserves, you know, fewer dollars, less total in both the free cash line next year and in the stabilization. To go too deeply into stabilization in the first year of what we fear is going to be a several-year need, that, that's something that will put us in a tough spot. The two and a half percent increase, much as every year, none of us want to go to two and a half, but as Mr. Ailes said, it's really closer to 40 years because two and a half was in 1982 or 83. Mr. Perry probably knows the exact year. But every year for almost 40 years, taxes at the local level increased two and a half percent. It's, it's a reality of delivering services at the local level. And, you know, it's, it's been, counsel, over several years, several mayors have landed in the same space in order to deliver these services in the way that people need them. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's go to Counsel Flaherty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I mean, I think Counsel Feldman has a good question. I think the mayor answered it. But the question is whether we can keep on sustaining what we're doing. You know, talking about the revenue shortfall, you know, we can defer some of the expenses. We've talked about that for this year with Mr. Perry, Mr. Ailes, deferring some of the expenses. But this year's budget isn't necessarily the problem, and I know we've talked about that. It's next year's budget where we're going to land. We might not be able to have 1.2 million dollars in new growth. We're not going to be able to count on, you know, Rantoul Street and with all that new growth opportunities. And that, that's another policy decision we can talk about. But the concern about local aid going forward for next year, we have some real concerns, and I would love nothing better than not to go up to the, and, you know, go up to that two and a half limit. But the idea of, we've already committed to that because we built a police station or building a police station. Remember, we voted for it and we said, even before, before COVID, and we said, we're making this vote, we're committing to, what, 24 million plus dollars? That's a major vote that we have to kind of, you know, tighten the belt on, never mind COVID. So, and then we still have the middle school. So we do have some serious expenses moving forward. We also have, you know, we're looking at the schools too. The schools, you know, are, are done well by us with the new, with the new middle school, the high schools aren't too far, all the elementary schools. But we just, you know, in this budget, if we, if we vote on it, 89% of the new, of new money is going to the school budget. I know we've talked about it, but can we sustain that moving forward? We can have everything. We can have a new police station, a new middle school, and, and be able to sustain new monies at 80, 90% to the school. Something's got to be able to give, and maybe the COVID situation will help us going through this year and going to next year, we'll be able to look at that. And again, the new growth situation, we have some serious concerns as we move forward as, as a city. The civil lining is, the city of Beverly is in great financial shape, and thank God we are, because if we weren't in such good shape, we would be having some layoffs. And I know there was a, an article in the paper that kind of looked at that and said that, and I'm sure Counsel Feldman probably heard some of the constituents, because I heard some people as well saying, we, we're raising taxes to avoid layoffs. And the idea is, we've always gone to that, like the mayor said, to that two and a half cap plus new growth. So it's not like we, we went to that two and a half just to avoid layoffs. I think financially, we're okay, but even with this year, the idea of deferring some of the expenses might help. But again, I don't want to belabor the point, but next year is our, our, our major concern, and we're going to have to look at things a lot differently, and there can be some tough, tough questions to answer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Freties.
Well, thanks very much. You know, this has been a very serious, intense time, obviously, and I want to thank everybody for all the discussions and especially for responding to a lot of the concerns. I, I understand that the city's in a great position as far as other communities. I understand that we can be very nimble. I understand some of the Option B items that have been talked about, and as Brian has said, his overarching or top, top-down approach. I'm wondering if for Option C, if the mayor and Mr. Ailes have talked to each department head about an Option C where it would be more of a bottom-up approach? In other words, let's just pick the 17 and a half percent number and say, cut your budget individually by 17 and a half so we can come in balance. Has that been approached? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Freties. Mr. Ailes, the mayor?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Counselor. And in fact, the mayor and I were engaged the last couple months with this very discussion before us, and we debated about the different approaches to get, getting this budget in balance. And one thing we kept running up against is that every department is structured differently. And so you may have Department A that's just all staff, and that's all their costs. And those costs are going up two and a half percent because that's the collectively bargained obligation for FY21. And they've got nowhere else within their operating budget to absorb those increases. And that's actually why you see some of the department's budgets actually increase year over year, because they're unable to absorb the statute, not the statutory, the collectively bargained obligations or the legal obligations that are required within their budget. And so finance is an example of that. The mayor's budget is an example of that. You see council on aging as an example. But then you have these other departments that have a lot more, I don't want to call it flexibility, but they have a lot, larger areas to look to, to try to, you know, constrain spending a little bit. Areas like our Department of Public Works or some of our public safety offices that have very large line items, well-intended, but by the nature of those departments, they need to be a little more nimble in how they react. So by, by, as a result, they have a budget that can support that being able to be nimble. And so.
Mr. Ailes, I apologize. I just want to, you said that some larger lines, you're really talking about lines that aren't used to pay salaries or, or other types of, other types of obligated costs to employees? That's, when, when you say there, for example, there are lines in DPS that help us to do, to, to, to do more, plant more trees in a given year, make, make more improvements to sidewalks in a given year, or fewer, right? There's, there are specific lines like that in certain budgets, but not in other departments, depending on, on just what type of work they do, right?
Yes. Thanks for clarifying. And so the, the summary point was that every department has that ability and that flexibility differently than the, than the one next to it. So to, to put a, across-the-board percentage reduction as kind of a target doesn't treat the departments fairly in terms of supporting their operations. Obviously, if we got to a place where we needed a Plan C, I think everything is on the table at that point because we've exhausted our Plan B, and we're still in trouble. So I don't, I don't think we should rule out anything at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Counsel Freties, does that answer your question? I'm going to go yes. Let's go to Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Hausman had mentioned the CARES Act, mayor, and so I brought it to my attention today. And so I know that we're eligible up to 3.7 million dollars, correct? And if so, they're asking, the question was, is that something that could be designated as a, to some of the homeowners or property tax, or is there a specific usage?
Right.
Reimbursements for different things.
So I, I see Mr. Perry shaking his head sideways, and that was my understanding too, that the CARES Act money, no. You folks, I believe, I'm not sure if you took action on, on the recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee, but I know that they, they were bringing forward to use some money to be set aside for, for relief, you know, for residential relief. We are applying next week as part of a regional application that the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is putting in on behalf of communities like Beverly that have real need but are not entitlement communities under the CDBG program, the Federal Community Development Block Grant. We're going in for some business aid through that. If we get it, we could get up to $400,000 for micro businesses, businesses with five FTEs or fewer. And according to the census count, we have 1,300 businesses in Beverly that have five, five FTEs or fewer. So we're, we're going after some money to try to help our smallest businesses, and that's eligible and available through that CDBG grant we're going after. As I said, the CPC saw the wisdom in bringing forward to use some, you know, an amount to help people with their residential costs, and the CARES Act funds, no, it can't go to that. There's a checklist of COVID-related costs to which it can go, and we've made application for that 3.73 million. The hope is that it'll be wired our way, it'll be in our account soon, and then we will take a closer look at just how much of it to spend on, on the different categories. We did have a, I don't want to say a rough draft, but we had a, we had a, a proposal to the state, but we can depart from that in, in different amounts as we see needs come through. We do know that a significant need that's been identified both by the schools and the city side of government for that CARES Act funding is on the technology side. And to Counsel Hausman's question earlier about software, hardware, you know, there's a certain amount of hardware devices for remote learning for the schools, laptops or other, other tablet-type devices for city employees who need to do more remote working than they typically have. So, you know, there, there are a number of, and PPEs, another thing, that there's a significant piece of, of the CARES Act funding we would be looking for for PPE, both for school needs and city needs. There's a, there's a list of categories. If you haven't seen it, I will ask Mrs. Barrett, Ms. Barrett, to send that along to you folks, what we submitted to the, to the, to the state government on that. As I said, it's a guide. It doesn't mean we are bound to spend exactly that number of dollars in that way, but it's, at least it's a guide we'll be working from as we, as we move forward with those type of investments.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel Rotundo, you're all set? And just to remind everybody, we do have that public hearing dealing with the CPA recommendation this Monday, the 15, next Monday, 15. Thank you. Counsel Hausman, please.
Yeah, I just want to go back to the conversation that both Counsel Rotundo and Feldman raised about, you know, Prop. 2.5 and, and raising revenue to, to the maximum capacity. It's a question that comes up every year. I think it's a question that should come, that should come up every year. I think for the residents, it, it's an important question, a fair and reasonable question to ask. You know, going back to the time when Matt St. Hilaro was a counselor, he and I typically raised that year after year. At the end of the day, I end up, because I don't want to, you know, be repetitive here, I, I end up where Counsel Flaherty is in terms of what he articulated. And, and part of the reason I do is I would simply refer to the And, and part of the reason I do is, um, I would simply refer to the, um, to the financial policies and objectives documents that we have. We will always have temptations to depart from good financial management principles, uh, in, in trying to meet, uh, um, uh, the concerns of our constituents when it comes to tax raises, uh, and, you know, how we manage the finances of the city. But I do think we have to be alert to the kinds of, uh, issues, uh, Counselor Flaherty referred to, the mayor referred to in terms of the dangers of departing from those guidelines and objectives, um, because we really want to be, uh, you know, because we're very empathetic with what our constituents are asking for, it's a very fair question to ask. Uh, but at the end of the day, our ability to be in such good financial shape right now to maintain our services is really based on the fundamentals of those policies and objectives. And I think we stray from them at our peril, uh, for what happens down the road. So, um, I, I think it's a really good question, um, but I think I, each year after year, end up, uh, not, not being able to advocate for something like, let's do something less than the full two and a half. So, uh, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. And it's a discussion we should have every year because we have people that move out of Beverly, but we have a lot of new residents in the city that, uh, may not know what we've done in the past. Council Rand, please.
Thank you, President Guancey. And, um, I guess I just wanted to add some questions and thoughts to the conversation about revenue. Um, I think maybe it's important to talk about the process where, where we're building a budget off of a levy estimate that we actually haven't voted for yet, correct? The, the levy is something we vote for at a later time. So I think what, one of the things that always surprised me about wanting to explore the idea of not, um, going to that two and a half percent is that, um, it, the budget season is the right time to explore that because if you wait to explore it, then you're, we're kind of stuck where if we, if we approve this budget at the estimate, you, we cannot later than say, by the way, we're going to not tax to the 2.5% because at that point we would not have a balanced budget. Is that correct in layman's terms? Maybe Mr. Ailes or Mr. Perry could respond to that.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, it's only taken me like six years to put that all together in full sentences. Um, but that, that really does, to me, I think that's a really important thing that probably the general public doesn't always understand. And I know it was a learning process for me, but, um, I do, I agree 100% that it's worth having this discussion every year and, um, I do think it's possible to become a community that doesn't go to the 2.5% every time. I, I understand the consequences of doing that and maybe that this isn't the right year to change that. Um, but to keep it in mind for future years. My last question is if the council or a counselor wanted to change that at this point, is that within our purview to propose a cut to the, the revenue? I know we can cut line items, but do we cut revenue?
I believe the, um, process would be to cut the expenditure lines, um, and then you would agree that the revenues can support the spending, expenditure level that would be cut to. Um, and then when we submit the tax rate in December, uh, we would balance it out then.
Okay, if I could just have a clarifying follow-up question?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. So, um, so does that mean that the, that the revenue that we, so we'd cut expenses, we'd reduce expenses, that kind of excess revenue would be out of balance until we changed the levy?
Um, I actually would be curious if Mr. Perry's still on the call, him having overseen the Divisional Level Services, if he's got some insight to this. That'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel. I got some thoughts there. Um, I, I think Mr. Ailes hit it right on the head there. If, if you wanted to, I know in every municipality has its own customs and traditions. Uh, most municipalities don't vote the revenues. They vote the expenditures, then it's the administration's responsibility to make sure that the revenues match expenditures and that's how they build their budgets. Uh, Beverly, for whatever reasons, uh, it's just been its custom to vote revenues and there's nothing that I'm aware of that's illegal or, or wrong with it, it's just what you do. So that's fine. But Mr. Ailes is correct in my opinion, uh, if you wanted to reduce the levy limit, you'd have to reduce some sort of an expenditure along the way to get that to whatever it is. And I know in some of the hypothetical conversations, half a million dollars has been thrown out there. Um, so you'd have to reduce expenditures by that half a million. If I may, just quickly, and then, and then I'll be quiet, obviously, weigh in a little bit as you're a budget analyst, as you all know, um, my role is to be independent. Um, I, I, I don't have constituents to deal with like the rest of you and I have to give sometimes unpopular, uh, suggestions or recommendations. Um, I remind, uh, certainly Chairman Hausmann and Council Rams, we had this very conversation on the Financial Forecast Committee last January, February. It was a difficult conversation at that point, but the committee at that time did unanimously recommend to the city that we do go up to two and a half, uh, levy limit, and that was before the pandemic and that was under normal times. I think, uh, Chairman Flaherty's comments, uh, uh, you know, we traditionally do this and, uh, and given the pandemic, certainly I don't think this is the year to do this at all. I did also comment to you all about the bond rating and tapping the, um, uh, the stabilization fund that went impacted. However, I can pretty comfortably tell you that if you were to try to tap the, uh, stabilization fund by another half a million dollars and leave tax revenue on the table, let's say 2%, I'm fairly confident, though I can never guarantee it, that I think it's going to jeopardize the bond rating. They would not look favorably upon, um, tapping reserves to pay for one, uh, for reoccurring expenses with, uh, one-time revenues when you do in fact have taxing capacity on the laws of two and a half. Um, so I, as your budget analyst, and I know this is difficult, uh, politically, but the right business decision for all the reasons you've already heard, and my own viewpoint is it's my recommendation, you do go to the two and a half percent this year, consistent with what the city has done for, as I understand it, decades. Um, this is not the year at all for this and, um, I would be difficult. If you do want to cut the levy limit, I would not recommend transfers from stabilization. It would be my recommendation to the council to reduce the budget. And I think, given the amount of budget of the school department, I think you're putting the, that school appropriation in jeopardy, especially with a half a million dollars. I don't know how you can avoid reductions in the school appropriations if, if it's your choice to try to reduce the levy. So, um, for all those reasons and others that I have, that have been mentioned by others, my recommendation to you all is to do the two and a half percent increase. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Rand, does that answer your question?
Thank you, yes, that was very helpful. I appreciate the, um, conversation.
Great. Uh, Council Rams.
Thank you. Um, those are great questions, Council Rand. And I have one follow-up question to your line, and that is, um, if we decided to lower the levy and reduce by a half a million dollars, um, and do, can the administration, on the other hand, the administration's not beholden to, um, the administration, so we would have to cut, we are just going to have to cut different, um, line items to get us there. So we wouldn't necessarily be able to use that, that, um, the rainy day fund or other... Now I get it. I'm sorry. Around, just took me one more time around. I have, um, just, and I, uh, but I feel our pain, the pain of the residents because, you know, they have increased costs and we have increased costs. And so it's hard to ask them for more when they have less. But hopefully the services we provide are worth it. And then just back to, uh, Mr. Ailes, your departments and especially, um, on the IT side, um, I'm hoping that you have in there some monies to upgrade the website to, uh, HTTPS in the coming months. And that's all.
Thank you, Council Rand. Uh, does anybody have anything else for, uh, Mr. Ailes? Great, thank you, Mr. Ailes. Uh, and we'll see you again tomorrow night. So, uh, that's one of the advantages of being finance director, you get to sit through every budget hearing. We really appreciate your time and your efforts. Next on the docket, we have, um, Ms. Pauline Texera from Human Resources. Hello, Pauline, how are you? Turn your microphone on.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Hey, thank you. Um, I do want to point out a couple of places in the budget where I made some reductions. Um, one is seminars and training and, uh, in an effort to save some money, we've decided not to renew some of our HR memberships and publications. And in our employee physicals line, we are now paying for our employee assistance program out of the health insurance line, so we're no longer paying it out of this line.
Well, that was quick. Do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. Uh, Council Rand has a question or a comment.
Sure. Hi there. Um, I actually wanted to ask you, Ms. Texera, about the, the lines that you mentioned. I, I was wondering, um, I appreciate that you took the, the, um, the weight of cutting those lines, but I'm wondering if you could talk about the, kind of the project that the mayor and you and I had spoken about a little bit about learning more about diversity and hiring practices. And I'm wondering if, um, you know, if your department were to, were to add something like a diversity analysis of our hiring practices, would it be in those two line items?
It could possibly be in our seminars and training line, but it, that was supposed to be specifically for training for the human resources department, for the employees in the human resources department. In the past, we have paid for some supplies or some fees, uh, for training out of that line.
Okay, so maybe, um, do you not have a line that could accommodate kind of, uh, an analysis of our hiring practices? Would that come from, and this might be a question for the mayor. I know we haven't, we haven't come together around this project again recently, um, though it seems to have become even more important than it was even in the fall. So, um, at least in terms of our city priorities. So I'm wondering if we were to see an additional kind of diversity analysis of our hiring practices, where might that exist?
Um, I can answer that in a, in a very general sense. There's a number of areas we could, we could fund it within the budget if that's what you're asking for. Um, certainly we could cobble together some money within HR, depending upon how far through the year we get and how expenditures are trending. Um, we also have some areas, uh, of consulting pockets within, uh, the mayor's budget, uh, in the executive department. Um, and typically that is the type of initiative that's led by the executive, um, body. So it would be appropriate to fund it there. Um, it could be an unforeseen cost where we use some of those funds to transfer to it. Um, but I think, um, you know, there, there's a lot of different options here. So I think that the discussion should certainly continue, um, and we can probably, uh, figure out some way to, um, have some options on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes, and, um, thank you to the mayor and to Ms. Texera for, um, starting that conversation. I think it must've been late fall that we all sat down and initiated that conversation. So, um, thank you for, for sticking with that. I know we'll work more on that in the future.
Agreed. Thank you, Counselor.
Uh, anybody else? HR questions? Mr. Sharon, thank you, uh, once again for everything that you do. You've been an incredible help to me over the past, uh, year or so, helping me with some things and, uh, it's always a pleasure working with you. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure here. Good night.
Good night. And Matt Lipinski is waiting patiently for us and he is our Animal Control Officer. Mr. Lipinski.
Mr. President, how are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
I'm good, thank you. Counselors, good evening. Um, when you, uh, when you look at the animal control budget, um, it's pretty straightforward. Um, of course I say that, I work with it every day. Um, we made a few cuts, um, over various lines. Uh, biggest ones, I would say, there was, uh, cut back to the overtime line, um, as well as, uh, education and training was cut back, uh, due to, uh, in-state and out-of-state conferences, um, you know, that are normally attended, uh, obviously aren't happening due to COVID-19. So we were able to cut back there. Um, and, uh, with that cutback, we're still able to achieve, uh, our goals that we need to, uh, yearly on our, our education and continuing, uh, training. Um, part-time, uh, the part-time line is zeroed out. Uh, that is typically used, uh, in the past for, uh, summer, uh, summer seasonal employees, uh, ever since, uh, the, uh, Animal Control Officer Callahan was moved to full-time and that was done back in, uh, June, uh, of 2019. Um, and that's a much-needed help to my department, um, and I thank, uh, everybody involved for that. Um, and, uh, those are the biggest, biggest movements, I guess, that I would point out and I'll open up the floor. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Lipinski? I'll just say it's very helpful that you're, and very considerate that every month you email, uh, the entire city council, a list and a report of everything you're doing within your department. I know I open it up every month and I look for something really amazing, um, but it's pretty standard. Uh, we don't have any wolves or tigers or the mountain lion or whatever it was that lived in Sally Milligan, that legend has died years ago, but, uh, you do a great job. You're a nice presence in the community and, uh, thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. And, uh, yeah, no, no monkeys yet, not in Beverly.
No monkeys, okay. Well, keep us updated in case, if you need, ever need anything, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you all again.
You got it. Good night, Mr. Lipinski.
Good night, thank you.
David Parent Chief, our Veterans Agent. Are we still on the line, sir?
Yes, I am.
Well, thank you. It's your turn. Give us a quick overview of your department.
Um, basically, um, things are pretty much moving as they have each year. Um, we've been able to drop the budget again this year. Um, there will be, uh, a pretty decent amount of money left over based off of, uh, how things are moving. Um, should be, should be a little bit more than 80, uh, not $90,000. Um, I'm using that as a general number in case any surprises pop up. Um, obviously we didn't have Memorial Day this year, so there's a little bit more than $10,000 coming back to the city from that. So there's a sizable chunk coming back from my budget. We did a, some minor reductions. Bryant, as usual, we're, we're tracking our numbers pretty closely. Um, so we're going to reduce the budget, uh, for the coming year a little bit more, obviously to, you know, because everyone's tightening their belt. Um, the only additional item is, uh, the contractor work for the graves because we got this program started and we are trying to meet mass compliance, um, per the state law of, uh, Chapter 115, Section 9, um, which requires us to do this. It has been neglected for an extensive amount of years. Um, and, you know, as I said, when I first came on a few years ago, I will try and get everything back to where it needs to be legitimately. Thankfully, we have a volunteer or contractor who's working at a highly reduced rate to get us up to speed, but the research and the help from the Shrav Grant. But the research and the help from the Shrav Grant was great. We found lots of missing Beverly residents all over the country. So, you know, once we get these lists digitized, you know, there might be family members out there who have ancestors buried in places they didn't even know. So things are moving pretty straightforward. And we've been, you know, like I said, I've been husbanding the accounts every year, just being careful. So it's really not going to affect us in a negative way.
Thank you, Mr. Parent Chief. And if anybody has any questions, Mr. Parent Chief's budget is on page 95. And it's just page 95 and 96. Any questions, comments? I'll just say thank you, David, for everything that you do. You're a tremendous individual who helps out our veterans community. They need it. Much appreciated. Good night and reach out if we can be of any assistance over the next year.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Dave Gellino is the Purchasing Director. And Dave's budget is on page 33. Mr. Gellino. Mr. Gellino, are you with us? Works very hot. He may have nodded off. He's getting on an edge. Linda, can you shake him for us, please?
No, I'm here. Now can you hear me? No, I'm sitting in my office and unmuted the phone, but didn't realize I had to push star six nine to also unmute myself. And that's probably what Pauline did too, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. My budget is pretty much straightforward. You will see some reductions. I'm comfortable with. Bryant spent a significant amount of time going over it with me and looking at past history. And so I feel comfortable that we can deliver the services necessary to keep the city in, in good shape going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gellino. You have a finger on a lot of things that go on in the city. Questions? Counselor Hausmann.
Yeah, just briefly, thank you, Mr. Gellino. Just a question about the last line for advertising on page 33. It's not a large sum of money. But given the nature of what your, your department has to do, which is putting out requests for proposal, basically publishing, is there a, you know, are there any issues associated with, with having less money to put out the, the requests for bids and so forth that you, you need to do just to function for the mission of your office?
No, not at all. And being inherently frugal, I push that off to every other department that I can. So when they ask me to do a bid, I try to grab the money from their line, if at all possible. And when necessary, we backfill with this line.
All righty, thank you. Nicely played, I guess. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hausmann. Counselor Ames.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just curious from COVID how just purchasing had changed and if more is becoming virtual than before.
Yeah, I can tell you that bid opening has become virtual. Bid drop-offs have changed the very manner with which, with which we do business, the procurement issue of it and things like, you know, it used to be simple. You drop the bids off or mail them or FedEx them. And bids are due at 11 o'clock. And at 11:01, we start to open them up with whoever's here. I've now taken to waiting at least 24 hours. And it's been 25 hours before I touch the bids and open them. They are done virtual. They're done on Zoom. They are recorded and a record of that goes into the permanent record. So, yeah, it has changed to some extent. Yes.
And I would encourage any way that you can open up even small procurement to more small businesses, Beverly businesses, businesses owned by people of Coverland. You know, if there's any way that you can even work, you know, with the administration somehow to develop some policies, just because, you know, I own a small business and even a $10,000 order for me would, is a big deal. So I would just encourage that, you know, wherever you can across the city. Thank you.
I hear you. And I'm a person who will not and has not used a self-checkout line. So I get it. I want to keep people employed. And, you know, they're the very core of our, of our city is the small businesses.
Thank you, Counselor. And thank you, Mr. Gellino. Any other questions? All right, once again, keep up the good work, Mr. Gellino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselors. All righty.
We are going to move on to the City Solicitor, Stephanie Williams. And her budget is on page 32. Ms. Williams, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and Counselors. It's nice to see you all this evening. Thank you for the chance to speak about the Solicitor's Office budget. Solicitor's Office is the legal advisor and attorney for the city. As, as most of you or all of you know, the city has 300-plus employees. There are 30 city departments, 42 boards and commissions, including the city council and the school committee. And the Solicitor's Office core functions basically are to provide legal advice, counsel and support to city officials and employees and all of those boards and commissions every single day. And there are issues that come up every day and every week pertaining to the open meeting law, public records, conflict of interest law, procurement law, employment law, the charter and ordinances. And often, they can feel like a quick or a short question. But generally, the question is being asked because the answer is not so clear-cut. So it does take some time to go and review all relevant documents and, and related laws and ordinances in order to provide an accurate answer. And in addition to that core advice that we give on a daily basis, the office reviews all city contracts, prepares deeds, leases, purchase and sale agreements, periodically reviews RFPs. And those are the types of things that we do just when there's no crisis. So that's something the Law Department does every single day, assuming it's smooth sailing and nothing is going on out of the ordinary. As we all know, one of the themes every year in the discussion about the Law Department budget is that the one thing that we can predict is that things are unpredictable. And a good example, of course, this year is the COVID-19 crisis, which since the beginning of March, March has effectively resulted in many or significant number of the laws that many of our departments operate under temporarily changing. And that pertains to things, you know, you're all doing wonderfully with this virtual open meeting concept now, becoming experts in it. But that was a huge shift for all of our boards and commissions. So you can imagine, you know, the time and energy that went into getting that up and running and understanding what all the implications of that were. Significant change was temporarily to certain employee benefits under the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, passed by Congress back in April, required with the help of Human Resources, understanding what exactly those benefits are, primarily with respect to time off. And it's really sort of a whole portfolio of benefits available, depending on very unique situations. The procurement law changed. There were some changes to that, as Dave Gellino just mentioned. Changes to land use permitting. You know, I could go on and on. And pretty much every department has been impacted. And I haven't even mentioned the Health Department, who, you know, has been expected along with all other local boards and commissions across the country to respond to this pandemic. And so we, to the best of our ability, have tried to work with all those departments to support them during a time that truly, as we all know, has been historic and unprecedented. And it's taken a significant amount of time, really, to respond to that. And I anticipate that continuing on, you know, it's for months now. As at first, it was what, how do we respond to everything closing down and keeping everybody safe? And now it's how do we respond to the slow reopening and continue to keep everybody safe and understand what people can and can't do, what businesses are able to do, what they're not able to do? So that's an overview of what we do. I know I interact with a lot of you on a regular basis. Some of you I'm still getting to know. I think most of you, we've, we've had some interactions. So you have a sense of what we do. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll go to Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Williams, I want to thank you. Firstly, you've done a lot for me. And I appreciate it. I just have one question in regards to your outside labor council. And if I'm not mistaken, the labor, rather, the contracts have been settled for the next three years anyways. Is that where that reduction would be? If you suspected it possibly could go up at all? Is that my understanding of that line item personally?
Unfortunately, Counselor Rotundo, I couldn't really hear, hear clearly your question. I caught that it's about the outside council budget. Is it possible for you to repeat it? Not really. I'm sorry.
You want to work on that technical difficulty? And we'll go to Counselor Feldman because her question is very similar. So Counselor Feldman, go ahead.
Thank you. Todd, I think I understand your question because my question was also associated with the two line items regarding, the last two line items regarding outside labor council or outside council or outside label services. And I, I think I heard Todd ask if it was, had to do with the three-year contract that was already resolved and the ongoing cost of negotiating that. And then my question to kind of follow up on that, on that reduction, because the reduction is so significant, is that due to handling more matters in-house? Or is it due to something like the contract negotiation?
Well, the reduction is really something that came about through discussions with the Finance Director in an effort to participate in the belt tightening by the city. I, I think those line items are, have been level funded over the past three years, which really, I just to point out, is, is, is really not level funding because the cost of legal services goes up every year. So sixty-five thousand dollars three years ago is obviously not going to go as far as sixty thousand dollars or even sixty-five thousand dollars this year. So the short answer is the reduction is not in response to any particular contract that has been settled. I will say those contracts all expire at the end of June of 2021. So we'll be starting a new round of contract negotiations in, in January. The, the, the numbers are proposed, the proposed funding levels essentially are what the administration and obviously my discussions with the Finance Director and the mayor, we feel are needed or commensurate with what is necessary to protect the city's legal interests. The city's, it's a, it has a hundred, almost a hundred and forty million dollar budget. As I said, 300 city employees. If you add school employees into that, and we don't deal as much with the school side, but it's over 700 employees. It's, it's a good-sized corporation. And when you think about it, we have two full-time attorneys and one part-time attorney to deal with, with all of that. And so the outside council budget is for specialty services. Usually, we, in recent years, we have used it for labor council because I think our, our cost for, our payroll for, for union contracts is something in the order, and the Finance Director can tell me if I'm way off base, something on the order of 20 million dollars a year. And, and it's really, the city would never really ever enter into any kind of financial commitment on any deal without consulting with outside specialty council on that. And all of the unions also have labor council. And, and they see hundreds of contracts throughout the Commonwealth. So ultimately, it really is in the city's best interest to use outside labor council for those purposes. Outside labor council, we have used in recent years for specialty environmental matters, matters that are really niche. You know, that, that it's something that attorneys do every single day that as a municipal attorney, given the breadth of everything, we need to keep abreast of and understand, it really makes sense to bring somebody in who's a specialist. And then litigation, there can be some overlap with labor because we do have arbitrations that are essentially trials. And they can have long-term impacts on the city's finances, especially if they pertain to something like retirement buyouts. If they're smaller matters, it's certainly something that we would handle in-house. So those line items we found over the years have, have basically, and certainly I manage to the number as well. It's not as though we ever run out of work to do. I always manage to the number and, and do my very best to never exceed it. And I think only one year if we ever had to come back. So I think it's a number that the mayor and the Finance Director and I have all over the years come to feel comfortable with and that is necessary to protect the city's legal interests.
Mr. President, do you mind if I add something quickly to that?
Of course, Your Honor.
I, I just want to say for the benefit of everybody, as, as Ms. Williams said, we have two and a half positions of attorneys and we have a, a legal secretary. And that's the, that's the department. And they all do incredible work. And there's never, it never stops. Really never stops. You know, they're just the myriad of issues that they deal with. They all, over time, I mean, they all bring significant expertise through the door. And over time, they learn more about different areas of the law than you could imagine. At the same time, and as Williams mentioned, that, you know, there are subject matter specialists we need to bring in on different issues. It's, it's not the same as, but just think about when you go to see a doctor. You know, there are specialties that you, you want to go for that doctor that does that one thing all the time because that's where the, you know, the volume and the level of experience. You know, I'm, I'm a lawyer, as I think most of you know. And because I haven't practiced law in a number of years, I wouldn't trust myself, you know, on, on any number of different topics within the law. It's just so varied in the many, many areas. And so, you know, there's a great store of, really vast store of knowledge that Ms. Williams, Mr. Dole and Mr. Corrigan have. And yet, at the same time, things are, things are ever shifting and changing in different areas of the law. And, and the specificity within any given area just demands that we have the type of specialist help when we need it. And, and she also does an incredible job of managing that budget duty. I want to make sure I say that. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. President, may I add one more clarification just for, for the benefit of the council? I know we're, we're focusing on the outside council line item. And I know Ms. Williams said this, but I want to make it crystal clear that that line covers more than just labor council. Even though the, the note underneath it says labor council, this is for any type of outside council that the Law Department needs, whether it's a, you know, Chapter 91 issue, whether it's a land use issue, whatever the issue is that may require some specialty, they go to this line to help support that initiative. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Counselor Flaherty, you have a question?
Yes, I want to concur with the, with the mayor had said about Ms. Williams. Hiring a city solicitor, we've, I've seen many city solicitors over the years and trying to have a city solicitor that has a broad range of experience is a difficult one to find and one that can work with the city council, the mayor and, and the department heads. And I think in my short time back here, I think she's done a great job. And I think they, the whole situation with the COVID situation, having to pivot and having to go in that direction, where it was uncharted territory. I think you've done an exemplary job towards, I wanted to mention that. I do have a question, talking about the specialists, you brought it up. I know we had talked about the, the charter review we're looking at. And I'm not too sure if, I think it would be helpful to bring a specialist and someone who was kind of, especially in the short time that we haven't had a chance to review that because we've been doing this virtual meetings. But the idea of hopefully bringing in somebody with, who has written charters before, like when we did the charter before, we actually had somebody who actually had written charters. I just want to get your thoughts on that, Ms. Williams, and see if you could help us with that.
Sure, yeah. Yes, you're referring to Attorney Michael Curran, who I believe assisted in many communities back in the early and mid-'90s in writing their charters. So, you know, we should talk a little bit more about what you have in mind. I think certainly, if needed, we could bring in outside counsel. My understanding of the charter review process, it's sort of something that starts at the local level, in terms of a committee within the city reviewing the charter and comparing it not so much to maybe what has happened outside of the city, because our charter is sound. It's a well-written document, and it's, you know, withstood, you know, the passing of time and really served the city well. So I don't think anything necessarily has to be changed. I think the idea would be for the committee to decide what its objective is in reviewing the charter, and perhaps to go through it and identify areas where, is there a question about, is this clear? Has something come up over the, since 1995 in the charter that we have found has, in terms of operating the city, become problematic? Or has worked really well, or has been a hindrance to really what our objectives are? And to have that internal discussion about whether or not the Charter Committee wants to make a recommendation that the city explore that further, certainly the Charter Review Committee can only make recommendations in a report. So I think it might be premature to bring somebody in, but I would certainly be willing to speak with you about anything that you may feel we, you know, first of all, I think it would be, I certainly want to have a conversation with you about what specific concerns you have, and then if we need to bring in outside counsel, we could do that. But that's how I envision the review of the charter process working.
And I agree with you. I don't think we need to, you know, especially the cost of bringing somebody in, we have to be careful of, and we can review that. It's just having somebody, even myself, who, you know, back a few years, but having some of the experience, who's kind of been, whether it be, obviously probably wouldn't be Mr. Curran, but somebody who's, might have seen something that can run more efficiently or a little differently, and then we don't do it right at the beginning, but maybe at some point, because we would have to work with you on this to make sure this would work, because you are experienced too, you might have some experience that says, maybe we should change a few things. And then we don't bring it right at the beginning, but maybe at some point, if we do have recommendations, that somebody takes a look at outside, as an outside counsel.
I think if it gets to that point, certainly we could do that. I think the internal work, you know, we would need to start at, really kind of at the very local granular level, and I'd be happy to try to help you with that.
Great, because I was going to ask you.
Thanks, Counsel Flaherty. And once we get back to the new normal, hopefully in September, we'll be able to kick that committee off. And I don't, I can't think of anybody better to run that committee than you, Counsel Flaherty, seeing that you were on that Charter Committee that wrote the city charter some 25 or 26 years ago. That should make you feel old, my friend.
Thank you.
Counsel Loran, please.
Thank you, President Guanti. Thank you, Solicitor Williams, for being here and talking about your budget, and I'll echo what we've heard tonight already. I think I've asked you from any range of things, from establishing a committee, to chickens, to plastic bags, and beyond, so, and you've helped me with all of that. And then even recently this year, and a hiring process. So thank you. I just had one quick question about the litigation line item, and it's really just sort of about the numbers that are there. I'm wondering, is that right, the projection for FY 2020 is $85,000?
I was looking at that myself today and wasn't really sure. So I, because I see that the actual says 138. And the other thing to keep in mind, it looks like the Finance Director is about to jump in with what looks like a smile on his face, so maybe I'll just let him answer.
Okay.
So Brian, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. Yeah, you're correct. It's incorrect.
Okay.
So those projections, unfortunately, sometimes are driven by the system, and we actually have to go through and manually readjust them. And this is one where it either was overlooked, or at the time when we looked at it, the expenditure level was underneath the 85.
Is there a 1 missing, or is it just going to be closer to 140,000?
No, it'll be in excess of 140, I would expect.
Okay, like closer to the budgeted 186.
There should be some savings that get turned back at the end of the year.
So, Counsel Loran, the original budget was 135. What happened was because there was a contract signed in FY 19 for legal services that wasn't completed, and it was so money that was in Comberg had rolled into FY '20. So the actual budgeted amount is about 135. And one of the reasons that the numbers, I think, get printed out the way they did is because a lot of, right now, we have money PO'd for legal services that have been performed in April, May, and June, and we haven't actually received the bills yet. So we're, at the end of the year, we work really, really hard to get attorneys to get their bills in immediately. So this budget always suffers from a little bit of lack of absolute accuracy when we look at it at this time of year.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, great. Ms. Williams, thank you for being here, and thank you for always being so professional and having patience with all of the city council, keeping an eye on us, make sure we follow the letter of the law. When Mayor Cahill took office six and a half years ago, he put together such a solid team. And Mr. Ailes and Ms. Williams, you are definitely part of that team, and it's great to have you still around, so thank you to both of you.
You're welcome, and thank you, Mr. President.
Good night.
Good night.
Steve Frederickson has been so patient, and you're at bat, Mr. Frederickson. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'm here, I'm still awake. I would turn my camera on, but my hair is scary, and the sun is going down. As the sun has gone down, I find myself literally in the dark, and figuratively, I guess, but we can get right to the budget. I guess maybe I'll start by explaining a little bit about what we do for those who aren't aware. When we issue building permits, plumbing permits, electrical permits, gas permits, even sheet metal permits, basically anything that has to do with construction or alteration or renovation of a building in the city, we have to review plans, make sure they comply with the building codes and the electrical codes, and issue the permits, and conduct inspections for that work. We also are charged with enforcing the Architectural Access Board regulations and the City's zoning ordinances. So we get the, we get to tell people what they can and can't do on their own property, which is always sometimes a challenge. But into the budget, I guess, we do have a few reductions. Basically, to explain those, they're due to staff turnover, we've had a couple of retirements, and we've replaced them with, obviously, newer people who were brought on at a lower salary. Those are the obvious reductions. Just scrolling through, maybe, might be better off if I just take some questions, but I do know, you know, there's a 32% reduction in one of our secretaries, that's the clerk of the Zoning Board of Appeals, who actually requested a reduction in her hours, because she was finding out that she was able to do the work so quickly and efficiently, that she didn't need all the hours we allocated to her. She, when she was first brought on, it was a new position created again by a retirement, and we kind of guessed at how many hours it took, and it turned out that she was able to do the work in fewer hours, and she requested a reduction, and that's the reason for that 32% reduction there.
That's very rare. Great. So we do have, Counsel Freides has a question for you, sir. Counsel Freides?
Thanks so much, Ms. Frederickson. Steve, I just wanted to say you're one of the revenue generators, so what are you seeing out there? Are you seeing an influx of permits? Are you seeing some agenda items getting packed again on the ZBA and the Planning Board, some of the bigger projects? Driving around the city as I do, seeing, you know, every other house looks like something's going on, so the average homeowner seems to be doing things. The other thing is, personally, I have a permit going right now for a project, and the virtual permitting is seamless, and it seems to me that it's something that could improve your department's flexibility, possibly revenue now, maybe even staff can do more. So I just threw a lot at you and let you answer.
Yeah, I haven't really seen a reduction in permits. I think the revenues you've seen are actually up. We've had a little bit of a reduction in inspections, mainly because people don't want us to be in their homes during this time, but the View Permit Program has been great. It's, I've been able to issue permits from home, you know, they apply online, they attach their documents, I review them, they issue the permit, and they'll go, they can actually print it out at home if they want to, but we like them to have a card, so we'll print out a card in the office, and they come into the office, and we just hand it to them through the door, they don't even enter the office to pick up their permit. So that's been seamless, and that's one of the software programs that we're actually in the process of changing, and hopefully it'll get better. I don't know what we would have done without that, without that program we invested in about 10 years ago. Again, all zoning requests, zoning complaints, we're getting those through email, so that's pretty seamless too. Inspectors are actually on the larger projects, are either comfortable going out and doing the inspection, because it's, there aren't a lot of people around, or in the rare case where they haven't been comfortable going out, we've accepted basically inspections by Zoom, you know, where the contractor will take his cameras with the project, and the inspector will say, well, show me that, and they can actually do the inspection online. So, you know, things have been operating fairly smoothly and seamlessly, I hope to the public too, but it has for us. Yeah, I don't know if I can add to that. Projects are still going on. I think the biggest reduction we've seen, like I say, are final inspections of bathroom renovations, kitchen renovations, where those can wait, you know, obviously they're going to not use their bathroom until we've had a final inspection, but there's no reason for us to be walking into somebody's kitchen or bathroom during these times to do a final inspection. So those are really about the only things that have been put on hold. Zoning Board of Appeals, some of the more complicated issues, we've been putting off until we're able to meet live, but we have been meeting virtually for some of the less complicated issues, you know, for sign permits and things like that, that need Board of Appeals approval. We've had one meeting so far in May, and the next one is in a couple of weeks, in June. So the first one went fairly well, and like I said, the chairman of the board has determined, you know, with input from the solicitor's office, that anything controversial, which may bring a lot of the members of the public out, you know, if somebody's building a project that the neighbors don't want, we don't want to do that one virtually, so we're going to put those off until we can meet in person, and hopefully it's not too far off in the future.
All set, Counsel Freides? And just a shout out to Chairman Joe Margolis, he does a great job, great temperament for that position. Counsel Loran?
Thank you. I just had one question. Am I remembering this correctly? Did you recently have a pretty major retirement in your office?
Yeah, Larry Demers is one of them. He was with us for about 12 years. He's up in the main cabin right now. So good for him.
Yeah, good timing. Can you point me to where I see that in the, did that create a reduction in your budget? Or I may just not have picked up on where that is.
Well, yeah, on the first page, Steve Latulip replaced Larry Demers.
Okay.
And lower salary, so that's a reduction 3.9% for that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have two new inspectors. George Gamble came on, I think, in January, and actually he already left, but Friday was his last day, he had decided he needed to go back to the private sector, so we're sure of the inspector right now.
Okay.
And it is a position that you plan on filling?
Yes, eventually.
Great. Counsel Hausmann?
Yeah, I, Mr. Frederickson has sort of already answered my question, which was, given my familiarity with the Zoning Board of Appeals, have been concerned and interested in how the ZBA is able to handle sort of disputed applications when, virtually, when not necessarily everyone in the community has, or at least cannot be assured, that everyone in the community who really wants to be able to speak necessarily has the wherewithal to interact virtually. So I think you've already answered my question, which is you're, I'm not sure how you're making the decision which ones should be put off because of that issue or that concern, but I'm glad to hear that that's being taken into account and factored in to whether to proceed or not with a virtual hearing.
Well, it's usually pretty obvious which ones will be disputed, because neighbors are calling every day, or emailing every day, wondering when the hearing is going to be. And obviously, a sign, an application for a special permit for a sign generally doesn't cause any issues, and we've already been before the design reward for approval, so those are the ones we can hear virtually without a problem. There are really only two or three that I can think of that have been put off until we meet in real life.
Sure, yeah, no, you're saying they more or less self-identify themselves. So you're sort of taking me back to my days on the ZBA. I understand what you're saying about the distinction between sort of those that become fairly obvious, and those are more or less straightforward. So thank you for that, I appreciate it. Good to hear from you.
Thank you, Counsel Hausmann. And Mr. Frederickson, I'm going to go out on a limb and say 15 Reza Road is not going to be handled remotely.
I was not going to mention a specific address, but yes, that will not be handled remotely.
We've been called also. Anybody else?
Yes, what about, to follow up on Counselor, excuse me, Counsel President's question, what about a property on Harrison Avenue?
I'm not aware of that one. Yeah, I'm not aware of that. I'm not sure we've received information from that yet.
Well, it's been postponed month after month, it started before the virus, so perhaps it's already been resolved. Anyway, I can follow up with you offline. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Frederickson. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
You're welcome.
Last, but certainly not least, you have no choice but to go last, because you can't leave until we leave. We have our city clerk, Lisa Kent.
Hello.
Lisa Kent, thank you.
I don't really have anything to say. Brian helped me with the budget, and Jerry Perry helped me, so I think I did pretty well, if I can answer questions.
Okay, how was your first four or five months on the job?
Good, very good. Busy, different than I thought I was going to be, but, you know, everybody's getting by, we're doing good.
Okay. Counsel Hausmann, you have a question or a comment?
Both. I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with Ms. Kent, and I think she's done a terrific job under incredibly adverse circumstances to take on a new position like that. My question really relates to the line item related to restoration of historic documents, and I understand, you know, why they might not be renewed as a line item this time around, but I do wonder if there's been any conversation, and I don't know if this brings in Mr. Ailes or not, with using community preservation funding to be able to continue that work as historic preservation, so that it would come out of that resource rather than your budget. So I'm not sure if this gets directed to Mr. Ailes or to you, but I'll throw that question out. Thank you.
I actually did talk to Dave Jono today, and we do have some funds still that we can use for something, I think in 2019, that was, Brian probably could help me better with this, but we have funds that we can use, but in the future, we're not going to do it next year, or, you know, the year after, until we know for sure that we have the funds to do. Those are old books, those are really old books. We are keeping up with the ones that we need in the office at this time, that we need bound and everything, but the rebounding, we're going to just wait on. But the rebounding, we're going to just wait on what's going on.
Mr. Ailes, anything to add?
Yeah, I would just add CPC is always an option, especially in this regard. They've been helpful in the past for this effort. And as you may recall, over the last, you know, three to four years, there's been a major push to try to get a lot of the historical records restored. So we've made significant headway. The Clerk's Department has made significant headway. There's always more work to do, but this is the type of work that, at this point, we're in a good enough position where we can wait a little bit, maybe seek some CPC funding to continue the initiative in a year or so.
Okay, thank you.
Riles? Anybody else? Councilor Ames?
Thank you so much. And it has been a pleasure, Lisa. You've,
Thank you.
You've helped this newbie work through the process. So thank you very much. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the upcoming elections in September and November, and just get an idea of how you see the lay of the land where a, if, to speak to the assistant, potential assistant that you're thinking about hiring, and just the resources that are in this budget and how they match up to what you might think we might need.
I did get good news that we're going to post the assistant job tomorrow. So that will help me a lot. What I'll be looking for is somebody who has the election experience and city clerk experience. And as far as the lay of the land, I am working on it. After this budget stuff, I'm going to work harder on it. But, you know, I have ideas. I have some people that I've been in touch with. And, you know, I'm really, I have a group meeting every week with the clerks. So we share ideas and everything. And, you know, if you ask me in a couple of weeks after this budget stuff, I'll let you know more.
No, that sounds great. And I did listen to one of your, you let me listen in on one of the clerks' meetings. It was very interesting. And you can hear in the Worcester City Clerk, in the Boston City Clerk, how nervous they are and how the landscape is changing. And I will tell you that I will do everything in my power to support you because I know this is going to be a difficult year, no matter what. And that I think that free, fair, and safe elections are just absolutely to the core of what we do as a city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Councilor Rand?
Thank you. I will echo the accolades. Ms. Kent, it's been a pleasure working with you. And I feel like we've all experienced some really unique processes in the past four months. So you've really helped us, helped me as a counselor, kind of move forward in all of those various things that I didn't know how to do. I have one question, and this might relate, I guess it's actually a little bit related to CARES Act money, maybe. I'm wondering if you feel like you have what you need technology-wise in your department to, you know, do your job. I know you've been doing a wonderful job executing all the different clerk responsibilities with what you have. I guess I'd just like a comment on that. And also maybe to hear from Mr. Ailes to see if there's anticipated funds going to the clerk's budget from the CARES Act to support technology upgrades.
As far as the CARES Act, we did all have a meeting with Carol Offleavage. And she asked what I may need for the elections or for the clerk's office and those things. The technology part of it, I asked for poll pads, which I think what they are is, you can use them for early voting, so it kind of, I can kind of cut the staff in half. So from six people to three, and having those polling pads will make the process a little quicker. What they do is, they just, you know, give you your license, you scan it in, and their name pops up. They accept it. You give them their ballot, and they're on their way. So it's, you know, less paper, less pens, all that stuff. So I got the okay to get those. I don't know how many that I'm going to be okay for, but Dave Jelinel is working on that right now. Everything else, I'm pretty, pretty good. I don't know if Brian wants to add to that.
Mr. Ailes, comment, question, thoughts?
Well, I'll just say, reiterate what Mrs. Kent said. All of our departments have participated in the planning for the CARES Act to try to submit what was submitted last week. That is 3.7 million in addition to the FEMA reimbursements. So I believe Ms. Kent had significant input in that. But in addition to the CARES Act funding and the funding you see before you in the budget, the Elections Department also has access to a separate fund where it receives revenue each year from the Secretary of State. That fund has about $50,000 in it. You may recall, a few years ago, we used it to buy some new voting booths. But that funding is available for support of the elections as well, should we need it. But anything that's related to COVID or any types of new procedures or, you know, creation of social distancing, things of that nature, that will all be eligible, most likely, under the CARES Act. So we intend to submit under that realm for it.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
And also, if I can just say, also with the CARES Act, I asked for like safety, things like the plexiglass at the elections and stuff like that for the early voting, just to keep distance and, you know, stay everybody safe.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And I'll just commend you on your efforts. It's a tough time to take over. You're doing your job, plus the job of the assistant. And I know you're short a little on your staff in the outside office, but things seem to be moving pretty smoothly. So, nobody else has anything to say? First, I want to thank Mayor Cahill, Mr. Ailes, and the rest of the department heads for being here tonight. Thank you to our budget analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry, who always has an eye out for the City Council. Thanks to Kim at BevCam for broadcasting this meeting. Tomorrow night, we meet again. We have budget, another budget hearing Tuesday, June 9th at 7:00 PM. Tomorrow, we'll hear from the Hover Master, Dan McPherson, Allison Babin, who is the new head librarian. Mary Ann Holak will be here from the Council on Aging. We have Chief Lausher from the Police Department, Chief Carter from the Fire Department. We hear from Darlene Nguyen, who's our new Planning and Community Development Director. Mark Foster, it was always interesting to hear from him. He's from Emergency Management. Bill Burke, the Health Director, will be here, as will Bruce Doig, who's in charge of just about everything in community services. So Councilor Flaherty has got bumped out of the meeting. He can't get back in. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property on his behalf.
So moved.
I will second that, all those, oh, roll call, Ms. Kent. Just the Committee on Finance and Property, myself and Councilor Rand.
Rand?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Roll a call.
Ames?
Yes.
Ricardo?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty? Flower? Freites?
Yes.
Hausman? Feldman?
Yeah.
Guanci?
Yes, great job, everyone. Great question.
Hausman, yes.
Okay.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Same time tomorrow.
Night, all.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night. Thank you.